Guys, we're live. So Alicia, I will unmute you.
Alright everyone, thanks for being here tonight during this time as we're trying to grapple with all the things that are happening in the world. And it's really important that we all get a chance to be able to speak, to be able to share, to be able to be here together. I'd like to really thank Whipka for organizing this event, for putting this all together and for gathering all of us here. I'd like to now throw it over to Kemba Mitchell, who is the chairperson for Whipka to start the evening off.
Hi everyone, good evening. And I just want to give a huge thank you to the overwhelming support that we've received. It's just amazing when all of us can come together for uniting regardless of the race. It's just amazing and I want to thank everyone. So welcome everyone to Whipka's first annual, first annual, I should say, first virtual town hall meeting. And for those of you who are not familiar with Whipka, my name is Kemba Mitchell. I am the chairperson of the organization and along with a huge, a dynamic team and they're all on here, amazing team. I can't name them all because we need to get to the point of this matter, but I really want to thank everyone on the team and everyone outside the team that have supported to get this done. Whipka has been in existence for 38 years, believe it or not. We're located in, in Pierrefonds, Roxborough in the West Island. And we are, our organization is a charitable based, volunteer based organization. Again, amazing volunteers and members. We are a staple in the community. And we decided to do this because it was necessary and we believe that voices need to be heard. And we kind of want to make those in the powers to be able to hear us and, and have some sense of accountability. And we were looking for solutions. We decided to do this. We have amazing guests, some panelists on the, that you're going to hear from. So again, thank you all and let's get to it. So I'm going to hand it over to Alicia. Alicia is actually a former Whipka member. I shouldn't say former, she's a Whipka member because you can never walk away from Whipka, right? So she's a Whipka member and you, most of us will know Alicia Bryan Beans from Global News. She was an anchor. Recently retired, so she's lucky. She's lucky. She's free, right? Alright, so I'm going to hand it off to, over to Alicia who's going to explain some of the rules. Because of COVID, we're not able to come together like we normally would in a town hall meeting. So there's some rules applicable to be able to, that everyone's able to contribute or not. So I'm going to hand it over to Alicia. Thank you.
Thanks Kemba. Okay, so as Kemba mentioned, there's a whole bunch of panelists. There's people here that you can ask your questions to. And there's some ground rules so that we can all get a chance to share and have our chance to be able to speak. So just so you know that all participants are going to be muted on entry. The panelists will be asked to unmute themselves and the general audience won't be able to unmute until the question and answer portion begins, which will begin shortly. And for questions, you can write to the host and either request to ask your question yourself or with your camera turned on. Otherwise, you can type your question in and then I'll read it and then you can say who you'd like to address it to or if it's just a general question and I'll read it out loud for you. Just make sure that you indicate whether or not you want to say the question yourself or whether you want to be anonymous. And to mention who it is that you are addressing it to. And aside from our panelists that we have today, we also have members, politicians, local politicians and members from Station 3, the police station. And I just want to acknowledge them. And if for some reason you also have questions for them, just know that they're here taking part in this conversation. Francescarpelegia, who's the MP for Lac Saint Louis is here. Samir Zuberry, the MP for Pierrefonds DDO. The mayor of DDO, Alex Patouchi is here. The city councillor and the deputy mayor for DDO, Errol Johnson, is also on with us this evening. The mayor of Pierrefonds Roxborough, Jim Base. The mayor of Point Claire, John Belvedere. City councillor for Point Claire, Cynthia Homan. The MNA for Dorval Lachine and Rico Chaconet. The MNA for Robert Baldwin, Carlos Leau. The MNA for Nelligan, Monsef Daraji. The MNA for Jacques Cartier, Greg Kelly. City councillor for DDO, Maurice Vasali. City councillor for Pierrefonds Roxborough, Catherine Clement Taubert. City councillor for Pierrefonds Roxborough, Gilles Gignac. And we also have the city councillor for Pierrefonds, Benoit Longvin. We also have some police officers here. It's community officer Kobe Gibson from Station 3 and lieutenant Francois Sauvay. So those are some of the other people that are on here that you can ask the questions to, but we have our panelists, the people that have agreed to come here. Thank you all for being here. I'll just introduce them and then afterwards we'll get from them why it's so important for them to be here during this time with all of us. So we have the honourable Juanita West Merlin Troire. We have, who's the first black appointed judge here in Quebec. We have Wuswa Mitchell, who's an educator and principal at Dorval Elementary School. Rochelle Rose, who's a recent McGill University graduate of law and a masters of social work. We have Shari Alin, who's a social worker. We have Winnie Daniel, who's an occupational therapist in mental health. We have Dr. Fajee Kofi, who's a botiologist. We have poet Sherina Forte Jones. We have Madwa Nika Kadet, who's a lawyer. And Ballarama Wholness, who's a multidisciplinary educator, research professional and social entrepreneur. Stephen Hennessy, who's an educator, community activist and radio host. And Dr. Alicia Keight, the associate professor at McGill University. So we'd like to start with you Judge. Could you give us a few minutes of, explain why it's so important for you to be here and to join us in this conversation?
Good evening, everyone. I feel that we're living a very critical moment now, not only in the United States, but in Montreal as well. I think it's a new awakening. What encourages me is that there's really a coming together, as I perceive it, of young people. And I think there's a diversity among the young people and there's a lot of courage being shown. People are being very outspoken. I think it's also a time that is calling us personally because of the extreme brutality of the assassination of George Floyd. I think it's touched us all so terribly and we can, we care for our family. We care for our, our children. And I'm here, I guess, because I have a certain amount of experience. I have a few years. I've been working in this system for a while. Not only in Montreal, but also in Ontario. And I'd just like to share. And I think that those of us who don't stand up in times like this can be considered complicit. I've always felt that way.
Thank you for that Judge. Wuswa.
Okay, bonsoir. Good evening, everyone. As an educator principal now, I believe that education plays a vital role in affecting true change. When you're looking, when we're looking at children, our students, they're curious by nature. They want to talk about race. They want to talk about how they feel. They want to talk about skin color, texture of hair, other attributes. Over the 24 years that I've been in the education system, although I've seen educators and support staff support students with these sort of, I guess, when it comes to race issues, too often there has been teachers and support staff who tend to address these concerns or questions on a more superficial level. Perhaps it's due to their personal discomfort when we're talking about racial biases or simply because they want to move on to the core subjects. When I'm looking at the curriculum, because education, that's what we're in the business of. The elementary level, where we're looking at social sciences, social studies. Although I've seen improvement with the whole, when we're looking at the richness of our indigenous, celebrating the richness of our indigenous brothers and sisters is reflected in the workbooks now. That being said, there is rarely little mention of the Black Canadian, Black Québécois contribution to the curriculum. Perhaps a few paragraphs highlighting the immigration in 1960s. When, if we're, if we're looking at a curriculum that celebrates a predominantly white experience. This is a covert and systemic racism that we're talking about. And I'm here today as an educator in a leadership role to say that we have to do more. I mean, we have to do more. And as an education system, we have to do more. In my experience, teachers want to give the best. They want to ensure that all their students achieve, meet their hopes and dreams. They want this. But right now, we've heard this on the media, it's not enough to simply say, I don't see color. I treat all my students the same. It's not enough anymore. Right now, it's time to really make it intentional. And I think that's where we're at right now. We need to be intentional as educators. As much as we're intentional with teaching the core subjects, we have to be intentional with ensuring that all students' voices are heard. All students' voices are heard in order for a true change to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for that. And Rochelle Rose, if you...
Hi everyone. So both my academic and professional backgrounds coupled with my personal experiences have strengthened my understanding of systemic racism's persistence in Quebec and its effect on our community. Earlier this week, the premier of Quebec, François Legault, sorry, confidently stated that there is no systemic discrimination in Quebec. Yet a recent report mandated by Montreal Police revealed that in comparison to white people, Black people were four to five times more likely to be stopped and questioned by police. During my time at Head in Hands, a community-based organization in NDG, we worked on a research project that focused on youth's experiences with racial profiling. With police officers, STM officers and security guards across Montreal. Youth from Whipka also participated. The project found that 61% of respondents reported being the subject of racial profiling. And 78% of respondents stated witnessing racial profiling. At the individual level, racial profiling can have detrimental effects on one's emotional and psychological wellbeing. In the form of depression, stress, post-traumatic stress disorder, anxiety and anger. Physical effects include high blood pressure, heart disease and a decrease in the functioning of the immune system. Within societies, racial profiling by police instills a fear-based culture of being overwatched and underprotected by the same people who are meant to serve and protect them. Throughout the project, youth shared feeling fearful and distrusting of police and the justice system. As they are targeted, scrutinized, marginalized, made to feel insecure in their own neighborhoods and excluded from their own country. As Quebec residents, both the Canadian and Quebec charters maintain that we have a legal right to not be racially discriminated against. There is a clear disconnect between the legal protections in the Canadian and Quebec Charter. As the Black youth I've worked with do not benefit from these legal protections in their everyday lives. Ultimately, if these legal protections do not ensure the protection of Black individuals against discrimination or provide effective remedies when their rights are violated, then these legal protections are simply meaningless ideals that undermine the very validity of our justice system. Part of truly eliminating racial profiling requires active and accessible protections and resources when those protections are violated. We have these protections in our in-law. Now the state must enforce them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call on Shari Alin to say a few words.
Thank you. So I've been a social worker with Bachelot Youth Protection for eight years. And I'm the Black designated social worker on my team, which means that my caseload is primarily or mainly Black families. And this is because of the importance of having a social worker for these families that looks like them and understands and is culturally sensitive. I feel my perspective has a place on this panel and provides me the opportunity to explain to you what it's like to work with a marginalized community while also being part of said marginalized community. Recently, Premier Legault announced that there is no systemic discrimination in Quebec and that is unequivocally false. Black children and families are statistically overrepresented in the youth protection system. That's a fact. It's been a fact for years. In Canada, racism shows itself in a more covert and subtle way. Too often in my work, I see young Black boys described as aggressive and violent while a non-Black child is described as hyperactive or energetic. Too often in my work, I see mothers being called aggressive and oppositional while they're inquiring as to different means or channels for their children in the education system. While a non-Black parent would be called inquisitive. Too often when I go to meetings, I'm met with surprised faces by coworkers and partners saying, I didn't know that you were Black. You didn't sound Black on the phone. These are the microaggressions that we face daily. These are the microaggressions that tear us down and wear us down and lower our children's self-esteem. I don't have an answer for what the solution is and I find it daunting that as a Black community, we're continuously asked to answer a question to a problem that we didn't create. However, I will say that representation, education and funding would be at the core of this solution. Recently, in a staff meeting, I spoke to my colleagues and I told them, you know, you don't wake up in the morning and think today I'm going to be a racist. But through your actions, through the things that you say, through your unconscious biases, you're acting out systemic racism. And part of my role in educating my colleagues and community partners is asking them questions that makes them uncomfortable. Why is that 16-year-old boy threatening to you? Why do you find this mother overly aggressive? And these are the questions that we need to continue to ask, to challenge ourselves and our coworkers and our colleagues to figure out the microaggressions and the systemic discrimination that continue to evolve in our health and social services. As being a Black Canadian is default being a minority. Everyone we encounter won't be Black and we need allies. We need those around us, our friends, our colleagues, our CLSCs, our law enforcement, our education system. To be open to learning, to be open to criticisms, to be more insightful. Those in places of power politically need to be held accountable. Representation needs to be made a priority. Blacks are overrepresented in the system and underrepresented in the workers that are offering the services and care. This is, this will make all the difference, receiving services from someone who looks like you or just gets it. When I first began at Youth Protection at Bachelot, there was cultural sensitivity trainings and regular presentations by community groups and organizations and activists that allowed the workers to have more cultural sensitivity. And now with the defunding of health and social services and education, we no longer have those presentations and those experiences available to new workers to continue that cultural sensitivity. This has to stop and funding has to be real, reallocated with these specific goals in mind.
Thank you. Thanks, Shari. Up next is Winnie Daniel.
Hello, everyone. Well, I am, I'm Black. I'm a woman. I'm a child of an immigrant Christian family. So I've been hearing about injustice and discrimination all my life, but also thriving and making sure that I'm heard and seen, that I excel, that I help my neighbor and that I contribute fully and freely to society. And these needs are what are being raised in the news lately and it's shared by the whole Black community. And I'm also an occupational therapist who choose to work in the mental health field. So every day I'm the witness of persistent consequences of chronic stress. I see how difficult it is for some individuals to get over traumatic events they experienced years or even decades ago. And I also witness how Black people or minorities go through traumatic events, whether directly or indirectly. Just seeing someone that you relate to going through an event has an impact on you. So we all can feel quite traumatized when we hear or see the violence being inflicted upon many people because of the color of their skin. And I know it takes years and sometimes a lifetime to be rehabilitated from situations with witnessed, imagine those we undergo. So racial bias issues affect way too many people and I've been going on for way too long. And I know we each can contribute to make a change and for me, that's how it's starting. Raising our voice, sharing our opinion, encourage, educate and hopefully arise the desire and actions for a change. I also believe that we are at an important crossroads of our history. I've been watching the news and all I can think about is there's no going back after today. There's no going back after this week or this month. People are tired, overwhelmed, angry, sad and very hungry for change. Not only I want to be part of that change, I also believe that the type of change our society needs right now is an all hands on deck type of change. Whether you feel victimized or not, whether you're Black or not, whether you have friends who are racialized or not, whether you feel concerned or not. Injustice right now, especially in the form of racial bias, is something that's plaguing the human experience. And we all are required to do our part to improve the human experience. So that's why I'm here.
Well said. Well said. Next up, we have Dr. Fajee Kofi.
Hi everyone. I'm going to speak in French because it's my first language. It's easier for me. En fait, comme Winnie, moi je viens d'une famille d'immigrants. Et puis, on est immigrés à Trois-Rivières qui est une petite ville. Alors, dans le temps, j'ai 39 ans donc ça fait 32 ans, on était les seuls noirs. Donc je peux dire que pendant mon parcours, les injustices face à la couleur, je les ai entendues tout au long de ma vie. Puis, la raison pour laquelle je suis ici, c'est parce que je veux que les messages changent. Le message dont je parle, c'est celui de mes parents qui nous disaient, les enfants, nous ce qu'on veut, c'est que vous excelliez. Ça, c'est correct, mais la raison pour laquelle ils voulaient qu'on excell, c'est ça que je veux que change. La raison pour eux, c'était parce que ils nous disaient, s'il y a 10 personnes dans une salle et que vous êtes le seul ou la seule noir. Les neuf blancs vont passer avant vous si vous n'êtes pas excellent. Donc moi, ce que je veux, c'est que les enfants comprennent qu'il faut être excellent parce qu'il faut être excellent. Il faut pas être excellent parce qu'on veut être meilleur que les blancs. C'est pas ça. C'est qu'il faut qu'on ait des chances égales. Il faut pas qu'on veuille donner notre meilleur parce qu'on veut être vu. Il faut qu'on soit vu parce qu'on est là. Donc c'est pour ça que je suis ici ce soir. C'est parce que je veux que le message de mes parents, par rapport à ce qu'eux ont vécu, change. Qu'on soit capable de dire à nos enfants, à la communauté, au futur, qu'ils sont capables d'arriver à faire de grandes choses parce qu'ils sont eux, parce qu'ils sont humains. Et non parce qu'ils sont noirs, donc ils doivent donner beaucoup plus d'efforts. Je veux qu'on soit capable d'arrêter de regarder le nom de quelqu'un avant d'appeler la personne. Ça, c'est un exemple parce qu'avant d'être pas d'argent, j'étudiais en génie mécanique. Et puis, on était, on avait tous appliqué à un poste de stagiaire puis j'avais été la seule à pas être appelée. Donc tout le monde se parlait, ah, quand est-ce que c'est ton entrevue? Moi, je disais, quelle entrevue? Moi, j'ai pas eu d'entrevue. Alors, la seule façon où j'ai pu trouver un stage, c'est parce que mon père connaissait quelqu'un qui a appelé quelqu'un et j'ai pu avoir un stage. Donc c'est des choses que je veux que changent. Alors, c'est pour ça que je suis ici ce soir.
Merci, Fajee. Up next, we have Madwa Nika Kadet.
Thank you. I want to start by saying that as a Black woman, it's a privilege to serve as a custodian of the rule of law and to be a member of an institution whose mission is to ensure the public's protection. In my career, I've represented the interests of individuals, businesses, nonprofit organizations, advise them in carrying out their purposes and compliance with the law. And I've analyzed disputes through the lens of our legal doctrines meant to appel our shared principles, values and ideas of justice. And through this, this privilege to serve, I still come with doubts. Doubts about even belonging in my profession because of the time to have witnessed surprise disbelief or a subtle change of approach when revealing to someone that I am a lawyer. Because of the loneliness in boardrooms, because of the incidents in which assumptions and biases based on the color of my skin have made strangers, CEOs, senior partners, executives skeptical and dismissive about the value I could bring to the table at first, then somehow impressed when I showed I could grasp basic concepts. Because of the time when my Black life did not matter enough to receive regard until it pended to degrees seemingly separated from my initial condition. From not being led into my own office because my new hairstyle did not make me recognizable to colleagues. To being questioned about my ethnicity from firm clients when told over the phone by a partner that someone with my name would handle a procedure on their behalf. Have been a subject to demoralizing racial microaggressions. It is important for me to be here tonight because I'm not alone. The Bahozu Quebec has been compiling statistics about diversity among its residents since 2008. And its latest study published in 2017 revealed that 1.5% of all of Quebec's 26,512 lawyers self-identified as Black. While the 2016 census showed that Black people formed 4% of the Quebec population. On the wider note, while 24% of all members pursued graduate education after acquiring a bachelor's laws, 30% of minority lawyers did so. So pretty available data, we practice alone in a higher frequency. We become partners in law firm on a lower frequency and we practice immigration law in higher numbers. So in my view, the anecdotal evidence and data recorded showed the challenges in access to the profession. So how do we fight it? So first, I would say that we fight systemic racism through systemic fragmented approach that involves all our different institutions and target a spectrum of issues watered and immigration and employment. And for my professional background, I think that to ensure the full participation of all citizens in Quebec's economic, social and cultural development comes with better hiring practices in the legal profession and diversity in the judicial branch. We need policy incentives to support the fact that inclusive workplaces are good for profitability and value creation. And large employers need to do a better job of considering that makes, what makes an excellent lawyer and look into non-typical profiles like those of older students with a job to support their families, for example, to garnish their ranks of competent professionals. And on the other end, we need, we know that we need to appoint more Black judges. We have here tonight the inerbal Juanita West Merlin Troyre and she's, since she's retired, I think that we only have now three judges out of 500 that are Black. And we need to keep on introducing legal doctrines reflecting our realities and social context for the sake of the balanced evolution of our systems jurisprudence. So we all remember how Judge West Merlin Troyre concluded in 2005 ruling that the detention of a young Black man by the SPVM was unlawful unlawful because it was based on racial profiling, while no Quebec tribunal had ever ruled in this way in this kind of case. So we have here possible solutions that may be related to my profession.
Thank you for that. Up next is Ballarama Wholness. It's your turn.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for organizing this Whipka. This is phenomenal. I've never been part of such an amazing group of people in my life. And I went to McGill Law. I have a masters in education. I've been all over the world. And I've never seen or been part of such an amazing group of people. And you ask yourselves, why are we here today? Well, really, we're here because people are protesting. And you ask yourself, why are people protesting? Well, there are a range of underlying grievances beyond the death of George Floyd. And we mentioned them today. Whether it's housing insecurity, whether it's curriculum reform, whether it's public security, whether it's unemployment, whether it's life expectancy. You can go through the gamut as people are hurting and now people are protesting. And what strikes me as appalling in our democracy is we still have to take these extreme measures and these measures to say, we are hurting, we need help. And I think that there's one fundamental point that I would like to bring and emphasize. We have to find a better way to connect you all policymakers from principals who know how to reform curriculum, who know what should be in curriculum or social workers. who know how to reform curriculum, who know what should be in curriculum, or social workers, to our democratic officials. I really think that in our democracy, we need to find ways in which we can connect everyday people to our elected officials so that policy can actually represent us. And I must tell you, my organization, Montreal in Action, we collected 22,000 signatures by hand here in Montreal to force a public consultation on systemic racism. We had to force it. The politicians did not want to listen, and now they are. And I really believe that if we are going to have policy that represents a diverse 21st century Canadian population and the needs of Montrealers, of Quebecers, and Canadians, we need more democratic initiatives. So rather than being in the streets, we can have people at the table making decisions to ensure that our schools have enough funding, to ensure that the food insecurity that still exists right here in Canada, despite the fact we are a first world country, get remedied. So I really hope that the politicians here that are listening, we trust you, we want to work with you. However, we need more democratic citizen-based initiatives to ensure that policy represents our interests. And the Senate, lastly, and the House of Commons should look just like the people we have here, and that starts with having our institutions reflect the Canadian identity. Thank you.
Thanks, Ballerama. Um, we are going to go to the other two panelists in a second, but I just want to mention that the Honorable Jerry Weiner is on with us and has joined in on the Zoom chat. So yet another person that when we get to the question and answer period that you can ask questions to and speak to. Up next is Stephen Hennessy.
Greetings, everybody, and thank you for this time and this space, everybody getting together. Um, the reason why I'm here is, first of all, I was a black boy that grew up in the West Island in the seventies. And I've had my own personal experiences with confrontations with the police where my life has been mistreated and endangered at the hands of the police. So, you know, this is something that is, is close to me personally and, you know, again, it's bigger than just one person in Minneapolis and one video. Um, right now, again, like this has caused the spotlight on this issue. And I can't say this is the first time, um, you know, this has been going on for years, we've marched about it. Uh, and they've killed some of us. We've rapped about it, they've censored us, we've kneeled about it, and we've been fired. And I think now, uh, through the power really of camera, being able to show the visuals of what it looks like to have a man killed in a totally disrespectful way, I think has touched every human being, because I'm not sure how a human being could watch that and not feel that that was a problem. Um, I think that has kind of raised a lot of ears and eyes, not only for black people, but for everybody to understand what we've been going through for the last 400 years. Um, but although that example is in the States and south of the border, that does happen here, and I don't want people to feel comfortable that that is a US problem. Um, you know, we have the history of, you know, Anthony Griffin, who I remember when I was in my early teens, and I was marching, uh, the same way that they are. Um, but now living, living in a society and they deny the fact that racism exists in our community, in our system, I, that just shows really a lack of understanding and that, you know, you can't change anything if you don't see it as a problem. So to us, that sent a very clear message that, well, we're not going to change the system. This system to us is fine. I'm not sure what problem you're talking about. And I think that's why other people, um, all have to gather and we have to use our powers. And that could be economically, uh, where we spend our money. That could be politically, where we put our votes to get people in power that could say things like that on behalf of our province. Um, you know, and, and all the other different things, including education. And I think it's really just educating everybody in this whole system so that anybody who has the power of having a job which holds a badge or power or a judge over anybody else, they have a cultural understanding and respect for all. Otherwise, they really should not be employed, because again, these are our dollars. So I'm ready to work with anybody else who sees that as being a possible future. And again, that's why I'm glad to see so many people here today. So thanks again.
Thank you. Wonderful. Um, and the last panelist to introduce herself will be Dr. Alicia Keight.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for inviting me. I did not get to prepare something as eloquent to say, so I'm going to try to say, and there's so much to say, that's the other thing. Um, it's important for me to be here to show my support for our community and to see how I can contribute to building our community's resilience. I'm the new professor at the School of Social Work at McGill. And let's be honest, social work has not always had the best relationship with our community. Before, um, starting my research and becoming a professor, I worked for Bachelor Youth and Family Centers for about eight years. And so I can attest to some of what Sheri has spoken to. When I decided to embark on my, my PhD, so my, my research, my dissertation, it was to look at how I can document, how I can provide the science to attest to some of what I was seeing as a social worker. And so I can speak to what my research highlighted was that black Anglophone children in Montreal are overrepresented in the child protection system. That that overrepresentation remains consistent throughout their time in the child protection system. So we're seeing rates of disparity with regards to going to court more often for these families, placing these families more often, and on being able to not return home as quickly as other racialized families or white families. I also decided to, um, after my dissertation, to do some work looking at trajectories. So how does, how do black children fare after the child protection system and looking at the Youth Criminal Justice Act? And it was surprising to also find that not only are these children who are followed by the child protection system more likely to remain involved and that they're also more likely to be followed in the Youth Criminal Justice Act. And so systemic racism is definitely prevalent within the child protection system. And I like what one of the other panelists said with regards to, you know, we are overrepresented in our systems of social control, but underrepresented with regards to the interveners, the actual people that are providing these services within our social systems of social control. And so I tried to, within the School of Social Work, look at how we can increase accessibility to our profession. I can see that in my classrooms, racialized and black bodies are underrepresented. So we do not have the number of students necessary to respond to the need. And I think there are also really important barriers with regards to being able to access the actual program. Um, so all this to say is that, um, we need to definitely be intentional, strategic, and deliberate with regards to how we can influence change. And I think that the answer lies in community. However, community is so busy responding to the immediate needs of their population, of their community. Whether that's strategic or not, I think it might be, right? So you've got precarious funding, um, and you're, you're over, you're working, right? Community is not nine to five, community is all the time, so you're underfunded. And at the same time, you don't have the ability to produce the science necessary. So everything, I think, often stays at the anecdotal level, right? A couple of instances of racism or a couple of situations. And so how do we move from anecdotal to scientific? I think that requires strategic planning and investment. But I think it's also complicated because I know that there's been researchers that have done research with the community and that oftentimes, sometimes community is somewhat exploited without having any of the benefits. So it's a really difficult situation that community is in, but I do believe that we need to, in terms of solutions, we need to be able to provide the data, which we've seen our Quebec and Canadian governments unwilling to assist with, you know, in terms of collecting race-based data. And I think we also need to build our community's resilience. So I think we also need to think about where we, how we can redirect funds from some of these instances of social control. How can we redirect funds from the child protection system, from police funding into community? Because they really are the ones that are at the forefront that hear, that see what goes on to our most, what's happening to our most vulnerable members. So thank you for inviting me.
Thank you for being here, and again, thank you all for being here. As you see, if you're like watching and seeing this, how many people, that such powerhouses of information and experience and connection to the community that's here, and they're all here to support you and, and support the community. So we're going to do the Q and A a little bit later, but right before, I just want to sort of kick things off um, by asking Shreena Forte-Jones to start us off with a poem before we get to the question and answer period.
Hi, everyone. My name is Shreena, as she said. So this poem came out of viewing what happened with George Floyd. And it was my way of processing. I wasn't initially going to share it publicly, but I felt to give language to some of the pain that so many of us are feeling. So here it is. I can't breathe when I think of how cold and callous a heart can become, senselessly killing a father, a brother, somebody's son. How many times must this occur for us all to rise up as one? Whether dressed in blue or clothed in black, we need to all rise up as one and attack hate and indifference, because it was hate and indifference that couldn't hear the words, "I can't breathe." This pain is too deep for any poem, too fresh for any consoling. My prayer is that you won't let that same hate control you, because hate doesn't loosen its grip if it gets a hold of you. Hate won't stop until you too say the words, "I can't breathe." Now, to the system that's meant to serve and protect, it's time to search and eject anyone in that system that can't comply with that mission. Unless you want it to be a world where it's blue against black, we need to all rise up together as one and attack hate and indifference, because it was hate and indifference that could not hear the words, "I can't breathe," and it's killing us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Shreena. Thank you for that. On that note, we're going to get to the question and answer portion. And our first question is directed at Jim Base, the mayor of Pierre-Fond, from an anonymous person. Uh, they say, given Pierre-Fond's diversity compared to other boroughs, what initiatives have you put in place or are you developing to not only have more black candidates in employment or as acting representatives?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having, uh, given us the opportunity to be here this evening. I congratulate Kemba and the committee at WIPCA for doing this and all the emotional speeches and poems, of course, that will leave us thinking about this beyond this evening's, this evening's session. So, uh, the way it is for, for the city, certainly, we know that for a number of years, uh, all levels of city governments and employees are underrepresented in terms of the cultural communities that live within, not only Pierre-Fond, Roxborough, but every community for that matter. Uh, there are tools in place to be able to encourage uh, folks from the different communities, from the black community and others, to apply and have an opportunity to work and be elected in different levels. We actively try to encourage, especially the youth, the young educated, uh, you know, youth of the black community and others to apply, to make it known that there are opportunities at the city. However, we've always said in the city of Montreal, in our case, because everything goes through the city of Montreal, it seems to be that it gets to a point where it's awfully complicated for people to get beyond the, the interview process and then have an opportunity to get the job. And so we are always actively pursuing this and trying to, at least, make the human resources of Montreal understand that there are, you know, possibilities in hiring cultural communities within the, you know, the scope of city management and the elected body where we sit. Certainly, when election time comes, we put out pleas to make sure that at least the cultural communities, the black community is aware that there are opportunities for members within this community to be elected and to serve the public uh, in a community where we have, for example, over 70 cultural communities represented. And so there are ways of reaching out to us to make sure that at least we give them the opportunity and the black community the opportunity to be within the scope of what we do. So I encourage, let me be the messenger here tonight, that I encourage not only folks within the black community that want to work for the city of Montreal or be elected for the city of Montreal, that we will lead them in the right direction to make sure at least we give them the tools to be able to have that opportunity when the time comes.
Thanks for that answer. Uh, we have quite a few questions coming in, so we're going to try to get through, uh, everyone, uh, because we have the opportunity and now is the time, if not now, when. Um, this is, this question is for those that are in the legal system, for the lawyers and the, and the judges, judges on the, on the panels here. Um, if a young black person, in particular a black man, is stopped by the police, what are his rights in terms of the information he must give? So if there's someone from the legal system who would be willing to answer that one?
Yes, we won't all speak at the same time. But, um, let me say that the first thing is that the young person has a right to know what the accusations are against the person. The person has a right to to be given reasonable opportunity to do so. And the person has to be brought before a judge within 24 hours or the next reasonable period. I think, uh, these are essential rights that are protected. And, um, before even getting to the question of, um, a person being arrested, I think, as is being said, it's important that there be in the schools and in communities, opportunities for young people to be coached, counseled on these rights and how to present them.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone else want to answer that question or have any other advice for young black people or black people in general if they do come into contact with law enforcement?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I'm not a lawyer yet. I have one more semester at McGill Law. But I, I would say one important thing that strikes me with that question is uh, Article 10A of the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms is you cannot be arbitrarily detained. And being detained at times could be also psychological. So for police officers in front of you and behind you, um, you are being detained, even though it's not physical. And I think that right now, what's happening a lot, and you see it, you know, on, on the news and you see it on, you know, with the cellphone cameras, is that people are being detained, especially racialized persons, uh, without any reason, and it's not being communicated. Um, I think that it would be critical for people to know some of, and obviously it goes beyond that, but I think detention is an important point. And it would be exceptionally important. I know Head and Hands did a great job of providing a pamphlet that provided information of when you are intercepted, uh, what to do. And as many people know, there was a report that was published last year here in Montreal that said that black people were four to five times more likely to be stopped by the SPVM. And indigenous women were 11 times more likely to be stopped by the SPVM. And the SPVM here in Montreal are not abiding by the Canadian constitution. There are illegal and arbitrary detentions. And I think that empowering people with legal education and helping them communicate their rights is an effective part of our role both as educators and as lawyers. And that's a great question. And I think it's something, a project that we should, uh, take on here in Montreal.
Thank you. Uh, do any of the other legal people want to say anything or I will move on to the next item? Okay. Yes, Judge?
Hello, are you saying I'm entitled to say something at this point? Thank you. I, I'm not sure. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead, Kobe, and then we'll get back to the judge.
No, I'll let the judge, ladies first.
No, what I wanted to say is I'm not sure when this point will come up. But since you're talking about the justice system and since the point has been made by one of your other panelists here, I think that it's very important that we look at the lack of representation at the level of the courts in the criminal justice system, whether it be federally appointed or provincially appointed. But it's even more critical among the critically, the provincially appointed. And it seems to me besides some of the recommendations that have been made in, in, in recent reports, to ensure that we have a better representation on the court, I would flag the fact that it's important to have, in terms of the selection committee, people who are also representative, sensitive culturally, as it's been mentioning. And it's also important when there are cases coming up before the Conseil de la Maitrisse which is a body that is provided in order to do some oversight for judging, that there also be some sensitivity, diversity and insight into how these decisions are being made. I, I don't think that we can have respect for human rights charters, elimination of brutality when it exists in policing, unless there is a court which is equitable itself. Now, I know there's a, a recent decision, just on the fifth of May, coming out of the Superior Court of Quebec, R versus D'Orfey, that also, besides the data that's been so well presented by several of the, the other panelists, stated, coming from the recording, reporting again on decisions of the Supreme Court, that racial profiling exists to a significant extent in policing. And this case comes out of Quebec. I'm a retired judge, so my communication is somewhat freer than it was in the past, although I do understand that there are still certain amount of strictures. But I would say that it is critical that we have political leadership that doesn't basically misinform people about the presence of systemic discrimination and what systemic discrimination is. In other words, it's not something that's necessarily deliberate, although it can be deliberate, but it arises from policies and practices that have a negative impact on certain groups. I think that we have to review again and become more proactive in terms of the designation, the elaboration, the implementation of affirmative action programs. This is something we feel is, has certain drawbacks. It's something we may have certain discomforts with, but we need the race-based data and we need programs in order to correct injustices where they exist. This is my opinion.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you. And Kobe, you had something to add to that?
Yeah, I'll do my best in English. It's not perfect.
You could, you could have done it in French, you see. Everyone's here to speak in their language.
I'm very much in the schools and I try to educate the young when they are intercepted by the police and policemen. What are their rights? I do have scenarios with them. I explain to them. And I think they understand it very well. But when the moment arises in the street, things don't go correctly. I don't judge anyone, whether it's the police or the people. I don't have any colorblindness here. But when a person commits an infringement, whatever the infringement is, whether it's throwing a paper down the floor, if they refuse to give their name, we're going to arrest them for identification. Even if the person gives their name, we give them the ID and we let them go. But often, it doesn't happen because the person refuses to identify. And that brings up other problems. There are people who film, who say, "You don't have the right to do this, you don't have the right to do that." But often, they don't know what's happened before. I've never had a personal problem, but I really teach the young how to react, how to behave before the police and policemen. And it's very primary and secondary. And we're quite close to Pierre-Fond, Red Bull, Bizarre, and Saint John's Beers with the community. People often call my parents to ask questions about my situation. I meet people, we try to fix things together in an team. I'm from Quebec. I heard Faji, who said she was three years old. She's thirty-nine years old, but I'm fifty-three years old. Yes, I've lived through things as a teenager, but I know and I always look forward. I've experienced things in Quebec when I was young. Was I going to say, "Oh, I'm never a policeman because of that?" No. I became a policeman to change things internally. And I try to recruit a lot of young boys, white, in the schools to become policemen. I try to sell the job to become policemen to change things internally. And I can tell you that it doesn't apply. It doesn't apply to the young. I'm even trying to give my name as a reference to Mr. Base just now. I'm a reference for them in addition, to work in a team to change things internally. I don't run around a building and repeat the same thing every day. I look at the future because I know. It's a team job. It's been twenty-three years since I was in Pierre-Fond. For me, it's important that people have a known face in the sector. I've seen children of ten years who are now parents. And I talk to their children. It creates a relationship, a close relationship with the community. We work with the cities, the community organizations. Everyone, we've seen it often. I look there. My camera is there. Sorry. But we work in a team to have a better future. But it's really about building for the future and looking at the positive. The city of Montreal, the Police of Montreal, is very proud of what's happened in the United States. We're not in agreement with that. And I can tell you that just now, it was Shari, I think, who talked about microaggression. It was Shari who talked about that just now. Me, in the post-three, I don't think so. Maybe because everyone knows, because I have a very easy word. And if there are policemen, that I have doubts who have a behavior that shouldn't have, I'm going to be the first to sue them. And in the post-three, we're not far from seventy-three, civil policemen who work there. I wouldn't be annoyed to sue my commander. And my commander, he, he thinks like me. You know, you know Patrice Bure. Sorry, he's not here this night. He's in the city for the manif, for the security of people. My lieutenant and I are here to represent him. But I confirm that in the post-three, if I have a little doubt that something is wrong about a policeman, about everything, about race and the comments, the people, I'm the first to talk and mention it to my commander.
Merci. Merci, Kobe. We have some more questions, but before that, I just want to throw it over to Shayna Thornhill, who has some housekeeping rules that she just wants to remind everyone of as we continue and as you send in more questions.
Hi, everyone. Shayna Thornhill here. I am the vice chairperson of WIPCA. Just reminding everybody that you can feel free to send your questions into the chat and we will get you in, onto the call. For any questions that may be directed to a general party, I can't always see when you raise your hand. So, in the participant window, if you just click on yes, that you would like to answer this question, I'll make sure to unmute you so that you can actually provide your response to everyone. Okay? Thank you so much and thanks, Lisa, for the awesome work.
Thank you, Shayna. So, we're going to continue. And on that note, there is someone who would like to ask a question. It's from someone named Alexandre, who has some questions for the borough mayors that are on this conference.
Sorry. Thank you, Alisa. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Yeah, my questions go to basically Jim Base, John Belvedere and any other mayor and councilperson that's present here. So, the city council of Minneapolis, just a few hours ago, announced their commitment to the disbanding of the police department in their city. And since the police department in urban cities have been understood as fundamental aspects of institutionalized racism in most of the sociological discourse, but most notably by Angela Davis, do you city mayors commit yourself to the disbanding of the police department or at least the promotion of it, because the power probably rests more in the Montreal City Council, just like in Minneapolis, due to its intrinsic nature and systematic or systemic racism? Again, Jim Base or John Belvedere or any other city councilperson from Montreal in the chat.
Don't all speak at the same time, guys.
You want me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
The only I can say and is I do sit on the Public Security Commission at Montreal as a, as a borough mayor or a village mayor. I think that the Public Security Commission Montreal is taking this situation very serious. We've met with the police commission. There's been a report made, made public, and there'll be more public consultation. And I think that as far as your question goes, it's a little bit complicated, but I think that we're all on the right page. I think that Montreal is on the right page and that's all be part of the solution moving forward.
If I, if I'm with a, with a follow-up while we have you on here, what are the next steps that will lead to what you see, things being on the right page? What are the next steps that are imminent that will move us forward?
Well, I think understanding and education, understand the situation. And I mean, it's been brought to the forefront finally. It's been something that wasn't, it was talked about but never accepted or, or well, I don't want to say accepted, but it was never something that we, okay, there is a problem. It was never, and there is a problem. I think that part of it has been brought for, brought to the forefront. And moving forward, I think the Public Security Commission is going to ask all the right questions. Hold the, and now I'm speaking as a, as a sole member right now. But we want to have more public consultation and we want to understand the problem and we want to be, like I said at the beginning, part of the solution. So, you know what? It took a long time and it's too bad it's taken this long, but I, I believe we're on the right track right now.
If I can just add.
Sure, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the question. And in fact, we know that in March of this year, there was a report that was to be presented by the SPVM on all types of interventions that they, that they did. And that report was supposed to go through a process and allow for consultations, not only internally with the SPVM in the city of Montreal, but also with the community groups. And I suspect that that will happen. I know that on July the eighth, it will be deposited and then we go from there. We've always said, and for those that know us and know me, we've said that there is systemic racism. We know that there is police brutality, albeit probably a small portion of our SPVM officers, as we know that the work that's done locally is extraordinary in most cases by the, you know, the agents that are on, on, in our, in our communities. However, the one element that always misses whenever we, we talk about these issues, we're always in a reactive stage and not proactive. And for me, proactivity means that we have to involve the communities that are most targeted. And this, in my opinion, hasn't happened to date in a way that can get everyone together to discuss the issues as we are doing here tonight with the stakeholders involved and be able to come up with policy that's passed for everyone's benefit. And so, that we're hopeful will happen on July the eighth. Once, well, at least that'll be a start. And once they do that and present their report, then the analysis will take place. And then we see what steps will be taken thereafter to make sure that policy comes from it and eliminates some of the, you know, unfortunate situations that we hear, not only in the States, but in our communities as well.
Thank you, man. We're going to get to more questions, but I'm going to just jump ahead to Samir Zuberry, who'd just like to say a few words to all of us that are gathered here.
Hi, hi, Kemba and everybody. It's really, it's really good to be here and joining everybody in this moment and to see so much support for Black Lives Matter and to confront systemic discrimination, systemic racism and to, in particular, work against anti-black racism in the past two weeks. I feel that we have a very critical moment right now where the population at large and a lot of people who normally don't pay attention to these issues are actually clued in and paying attention. And that's really, that's really heartwarming and encouraging. I, I, I know that in the conversations that I'm involved in, what I'm seeing is that there is a willingness to actually have more than allyship, but concrete actions. And I feel that it's important for those who are part of this conversation, all of us in this call, to, to not only ask for allyship, but also concrete actions. So, I just want to share those words and those words of solidarity, but also that I personally am, am asking for concrete action to address systemic discrimination, racism and anti-black racism in particular.
Thank you.
Welcome.
The next question that we have is from Unisa and it's for the police, the police department. So, the question is, starts off saying, "It seems that the requirements to get into the police force for people of color and minorities is built against us here in Quebec. What is the point of implementing a swim test to get into a program, knowing that the National School of Quebec, the swim test requirement to graduates is abolished? What is the systemic reality that is being portrayed? There are barely any applicants of color that have tried to get into the program because of the truth as a minority. Many did not, may not have had the chance to take swim lessons when they were younger and requiring for a difficult test to be implied. Seems like the police force here in Quebec has a way to not have diversity in the system."
Okay.
So, yeah. Kobe, if you want to address the
I, I think, yeah, I, I speak about my own story. When I started policing, I was hired as a RCMP officer. So, I had to spend six months in Regina for my training and we had swimming. I'm not good at swimming. I'm more like jumping and running, okay? But I did take classes to get better at it, but I wasn't the best one. We were two guys, two blackmail in, in my troop and we had a hard time. We went through it and it's part of the training. I don't know about Nicolette here in Quebec. I think they don't have swimming, swimming anymore. That's something I'm going to have to check and let you know, guys. But people can go and apply and get ready for it and prepare for it. But I know running is very important and workout with weights and stuff and, and keep in shape is very important. Swimming is not the main thing right now to become a police officer and they can go and have their course without stressing out about it.
Thank you, Kobe. Benoit Angervain would also like to answer this question.
On m'entends bien, Kobe?
Oui.
Oui, okay. Je voulais rajouter mon grain de sel par rapport à, par rapport à, dans le fond, l'importance d'avoir ces événements-là comme aujourd'hui, suite à des situations comme il y a eu. J'ai envie de dire qu'en février 2019, notre parti politique, entre autres avec mon collègue Jim Base, Catherine Clément Talbot, Yves Gignac, on a tous travaillé ensemble pour faire en sorte que les caméras portatives, qui faisait partie des recommandations qui date de 2006. Le Conseil Interculturel de la Ville de Montréal ont produit un rapport il y a ça presque quinze ans. Et depuis chaque élu essaie de faire avancer cette cause-là, de faire en sorte qu'il y ait des outils, des actions concrètes pour justement que ce genre de situation-là n'arrive jamais. Le processus de municipal étant, je vais dire, à la vitesse comme il est. Est-ce que c'est assez vite? Certainement pas. Mais on voit bien qu'avec toute votre implication, avec le fait que les citoyens viennent puis s'expriment, on fait avancer certaines de ces motions-là puis ces motions-là finalement sont acceptées. La mairesseante vient d'annoncer que finalement elle va aller de l'avant avec la caméra après avoir dit non pendant un an. Donc ça l'a pris cette mobilisation citoyenne-là pour que justement les administrations politiques décident de changer d'avis puis d'aller dans les directions que les recommandations suite à des consultations publiques ont été mises de l'avant. Là, on a encore une autre consultation qui s'en vient de racisme systémique. On a plusieurs travaux qui sont en cours puis le message que je voudrais renvoyer à tout le monde qui écoute ce soir, c'est impliquez-vous, suivez les travaux qui se font et hésitez pas à émettre vos opinions. C'est ce que je voulais vous dire ce soir. Merci à tout le monde.
Merci, merci pour ça. Merci d'être ici. Up next, Naomi is here and would like to ask her own question. Naomi?
Hi, thank you for the opportunity for this. I just wanted to ask educators or people who can help educators what they think needs to happen in order for every student to learn black history in depth, not just in February. It matters all year long, all grades, all ages, because everyone's curious. A lot of what I've learned, well, not me specifically, I had the benefit of having a black teacher three years in a row. So I learned in-depth so amazing stuff. But I know a lot of other people who went to schools in the West Island did not have that benefit. So what can we do to fix that?
So does anyone? Is anyone feeling compelled to answer Naomi's question? Just let Shayna know and she'll unmute you and you can answer.
Hi. So thank you for your question. My experience going through school is I've never even seen a black teacher, principal at all through my whole schooling. Hence the reason why I became a teacher. And now as a black principal, basically at this point, wherever any school I'm in, I make sure that it's happening, that we acknowledge Black History Month. And and you know, there's teachers, there are great teachers that that want to go beyond just Black History Month. Because essentially, what we're looking at is contributions, what we're looking at is incorporated into the actual everyday. So if you're reading a story, a story could have black characters, a story can be written by a black author. This is what we need to do, not just February. But look, at this point, because we don't have it across the system, when we're thinking about Quebec education, this is a whole Quebec. Now, there are some schools that perhaps are not doing too much at all with black history. It's not, you know, as a black administrator, I'm lucky, I can, I could affect more change within the classroom. Recently, there's been a, some of you may know her, Akila Newton, Tammy Gabay, I believe. They wrote, created a black history workbook. And I know some of my colleagues, we brought that into the schools. And the feedback that I got from some of my teachers is that this is helpful because they're using this now beyond the black history month. But that just started basically last year and this year. It's a bigger, I'm so glad you brought this up because as a principal, I will be definitely talking to the education department at our school board. And this is going right up to the education minister. We need to make this part of, there's, I think, when I was part of Quebec Black Educators, I guess in the early 90s there, before I went to work in the States. We were looking at a document called Some Missing Pages, and this is what it is. There's pages missing in the curriculum and it has to be part of. I would like to just mention something as teachers, even when they're young, like my nephew in a K4 program, coming home about, you know, questions that kids are talking about, about the hair, about his hair or whatnot. And thank, I'm very thankful to this teacher because she took that opportunity, not simply as, oh, this is just how his hair is. Took it as an opportunity to say, look, share, do a story time about it. And not just one time, but ongoing throughout the school year. And this is what we need, more teachers looking at, this is what I use the word intentional. It has to be intentional. It cannot be just, okay, we're going to discuss this today and then move on to math, history and so forth. It has to be intentional. And that's going to take some time. But the main thing is the fact that we're discussing it now, the fact that we're going to be bringing this, I know for myself and I know some colleagues of mine, for sure, we'll be talking with the education department, ed services at the school board, and then moving it right up to the education minister, Monsieur Robert.
Thank you. Malik Shahid, you wanted to address this question also.
Yes, I want to address it because this year, we at Youth Stars did a very successful black history tour. We did Montreal, we did Ottawa, we did Enregen. And I had a chance to sit down with the different school boards, such as the Lesley Pearson School Board and the English Montreal School Board of Montreal. I've also tried to reach out to Commission Scolaire Magritte Bourgeois regarding black history. And what it comes down to is that it's the schools that make the choice about black history. So the school boards at this present time cannot enforce schools to do black history. One of the other ways to get black history in the schools is a lot of times when we are posting on social media, parents will contact us directly and request their school to have us come in. So that's another way. It has to be with people who work in the school, such as Wu Sa Michelle. It has to be people who work in the community, but also the parents have to get involved. You know, we just can't be bystanders. We all have to get involved and put the pressure on the school boards to enforce black history, not during March, not during February, but all year round.
Thank you. Up next to answer the question as well is Stephen Hennessy.
Yes, thank you again. Listen, really good question. I think the education part of it, and also when it comes to the psychology of both white and black people, has to be that our education of black history does not start at slavery. And I think unfortunately, that is one of the biggest things that's really like beaten into the minds of young children. And again, as a young white child growing up, first understanding of the difference between white and black people is that, oh, at one point we were in power and we had power over them. And you know, even and as a black child growing up with, wow, that's how were things once. As compared to starting off with the great histories that had happened in Africa and the great accomplishments of black Canadians, inventors and all the rest of that. And I think if all cultures get an understanding of, again, the human things that black people have contributed, it would go a long way in hopefully stomping out racism.
Thank you. And that segues really nicely into the next question, which is for those that are on here that are non-melanated, those here that are taking part of in this conversation. The question is, the person is curious to know what steps those that aren't people of color are taking in their personal and professional lives that they will be implementing to amplify racialized voices and consequently take action to break down oppressive systems and barriers. So it's for the non-people of color that are here and participating. Thank you for being here. Feel free to answer the question.
Hey, I guess I'm unmuted. Well, first of all, this is a really fascinating conversation. And I'm really so pleased to be part of it, the insights. I've been extremely, extremely interesting. And coming together like this as a group motivates everyone, I think, in the long run. And so in terms of myself, well, you know, I'm part of a policy process and in Ottawa. And for example, we have a caucus, we have a liberal caucus, I chair the Liberal Caucus. And within the Liberal Caucus, we have sub-caucuses that essentially, you know, feed into national caucus with their insights and recommendations. And we, we have a fellow by the name of Greg Fergus, you probably know him well. He's actually a former West Islander. He represents the writing of Hull Almer at the moment in the Ottawa Gatineau region. And so I, you know, I, we have good conversations with Greg and I know he's working very hard to see what steps, what specific steps, and some of them have been alluded to here. For example, with regards to data gathering, there's a lot of really important work that needs to be done, in my view. That is, you know, maybe a little, it's not the kind of thing that 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 sounds exciting on the surface. But I think Dr. Kyle brought it up, that there's, there's a lot of science to be done to give, to, to, you know, translate the anecdotal evidence into, into the science that can motivate change and policies. So I, you know, I certainly interact a lot with Greg and, and I think the whole caucus, the whole National Liberal Caucus, and Samir can attest to this, we, you know, we, we're all, you know, we're all pushing in the same direction as Greg and learning from, from other members of the caucus that, that, of the wider caucus that are members of the black caucus, like Ahmed Hussain, for example. And so, you know, a lot of work, I think it was, it was, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting some names. But the young gentleman who was in this last year of law at McGill, you know, he talked about the necessity of creating connections between, between activists and people on this call, for example, and policymakers. Well, there are structures in Parliament, and it would be the same in the National Assembly and at the municipal level that, that are there and that can be used to advance ideas and issues. So, you know, it's a process and, and, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of work to be done that needs, needs expertise, the kind of expertise that's assembled on this call. And it's, 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 it's difficult work and it's, it takes a while to, to get the data and that kind of thing. So, but it's important and it's fundamental. So I know Greg and the Black Caucus, they're, they're pushing very hard, I believe, to, to ensure that the data that we need is collected. And, you know, the government, of course, has, has brought in an anti-racism strategy and it's going to create an anti-racism secretariat. There's, there's a new initiative, the Black Community Initiative that has some funding that will help create capacity in, at the local level. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Whipka is going to be accessing that program. So there's so much to do and we need all hands on board, doing whatever everyone can regardless of their race or religion. I think what, what, there's been, I think, the judge Wes Moreland mentioned this, there's been a consciousness raising in the last two weeks. And, and I think that that creates optimism in me. Because if you're going to affect change, you have to have that broad-based support, which has been expressed in the last two weeks across all segments of society. And I, I feel very, you know, optimistic that, that real change will happen and that the changes will be made to the policies and procedures and structures that, taken as a whole, constitute systemic racism. I forget who it was who said this, but I always refer back to this because I think it's very illustrative. What is systemic racism? And we have to educate people about what systemic racism is. Because, you know, we have to define the term because, you know, some people are wondering, well, what does systemic racism mean? You know, and, and, and what didn't, but I remember hearing someone say systemic racism. When you've eliminated attitudinal racism, what you have left is systemic racism. So it's those policies and structures and procedures that have built up over time and that they have their own inertia and that, you know, don't reflect the values of the society anymore, but they, they create, they create microaggressions and they create problems for minorities, in this case, visible minorities. So there's a lot of work to do, there's, but there's a lot of science, there's a lot of difficult work to do, a lot of research. And it's wonderful to see so many people on this call who, who are engaged in, in, you know, that kind of research, which is going to make a difference in the, in the longer term.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Greg Kelly is also here and would like to address that question.
Yeah. Hi, everyone. Thanks a lot for organizing this. I want to talk really quickly about what I can try to do in terms of concrete action and what I can try to bring forward in Quebec City. One is body cams on police, police officers and in police cruisers. I think that is essential, not just here in Montreal, but across the entire province. This is something that came up when we were talking about the missing indigenous women who were murdered, that this is something that should be done in Quebec. There was 160 body cameras that were put out there for SQ officers to use in a pilot project that were never used. It's been three years, they've had them, they've never used it. We have to move on that quickly. Because it brings transparency, not just for us, but also for police officers. That's what's extremely important. Another thing that I want to bring in is that we want to have to see more diversity in the highest places in our society right now. We're talking about education. When did we ever have, you know, a rector or, sorry, a director of a university who came from a cultural community? At some of the highest points of Hydro Quebec, things like that, we have to be more diverse in the most important parts of our society. And those are things that we can push. And I just want to go to that point that right now in Quebec City, there's not a single black member who is a police officer in Quebec City. That is the second biggest city in the entire province. So it's outside of Montreal, we also have to talk about these issues. I was extremely happy to see that, you know, in eastern townships in Sherbrooke, there was a large demonstration like the one that was echoed in Montreal. We have to bring this to all the corners of Quebec and have this discussion. So that's something too, that we got to keep pushing, diversing our police forces across the entire province. And another thing that I can always do for you guys is of course, you know, not just listen, but have my door open. Come visit me, come talk to me about these issues and how we can work together. But I want to just continue on Francis's point. Data is so important. And in Quebec, we don't do a very good job, even most recently with the COVID outbreak. We were not keeping data on cultural communities and how they're being impacted and who was sick from it. And if you looked in the United States, they had a lot of, with the black community seemed to suffer more from COVID. And there seems to be different reasons, but some of it might actually be associated to genetics and other links to, you know, whatever it may be into their communities. But those are things that we need to have data on and not just for COVID, but across the board in a lot of other cases to better understand the socioeconomic situation. And Quebec, I can tell you right now, doesn't do a very good job of keeping data on multiple of issues. So that's something that I can push for in Quebec. I can't change it. I might be in the opposition. But bring that forward. And there's two really important things that are coming out very shortly in Quebec. One is that there's a white paper on policing in the province. And the government has said there will be something in there with race, but I have no idea who they're talking to and how they're forming that. Is that just coming from the ministry? Are they doing an adequate consultation with society? No idea, but right now it seems to be done behind closed doors. And the premier also said that he would come out with an action plan against racism. I hope, again, he reaches out far and wide to talk with all Quebecers in all the corners of the province to see what can be done. And again, not just done behind closed doors, a bunch of civil servants who do it, who might not necessarily reflect the true diversity of our society. So I'm not going to go on much further than that. But those are things I'm going to go out there and work for, for you guys. And like I said, my door is always open. You guys can reach me on Facebook. You can reach me via email. Come see me when we're allowed to see each other again and the offices are open and that's safe. Or we can set up a Zoom or FaceTime, but I want to hear from you. And I am asking you guys, Kamba, everyone out there, let's not just do this call once a year. Can we try to make this a little bit more frequent so we can check in with each other? And that we can continue to have this dialogue that goes on for a while? That's important for me too. So I can know where you guys are at, what you're thinking, and I can try to bring you an update on things. So guys, reach out to me and talk to me. And that, that's all I wanted to say. And thank you again for organizing. And thank you again for organizing.
Thank you, thank you, Greg. And it kind of leads to sort of the next question because several times this evening, many people have mentioned that this will all be a coordinated effort between elected officials, the community, those that are taking part. And a lot of that may have to do with Quebec and the Quebec government. And is there anyone from the CAQ on this conversation? I can't see all the boxes now, who could perhaps answer to this? Okay. I don't think there is. Oh, from the CAQ? No, okay. So I'd like to give Fajie a chance to ask her question.
Mais en fait, c'est ça ma question, je voulais savoir si ce serait quoi les actions pour inclure la société, la communauté dans les discussions comme Monsieur Kelli a mentionné. Ça va être important de pas faire ça justement à huis clos, de faire ça de façon ouverte, de prendre le pou de la communauté, de voir comment est-ce qu'on peut travailler ensemble, les dirigeants et les membres de la communauté pour apporter un peu l'aspect détouré de la situation. Donc je pense que tout le monde a un peu répondu à ma question que j'avais au départ. C'est quelque chose qui dans la discussion, alors j'ai ma réponse.
Merci. Um, we're going to start getting into the second portion where we talk about a little bit more, some solutions, we've kind of touched on it. But before we do that, I'd like to ask Raji Monsef to come on and speak to us all.
Hi. Good evening.
Evening.
Okay, first of all, I would like to thank the West Island Black Community Association. Hi to Kimba for inviting me to join you. So this is the positive thing of the COVID. The unique positive thing that we have today, this fantastic panel. And I'm here since the beginning, I have so many notes and thank you so much, everyone. I, I have so many notes on my iPhone. And what I can say today is we should be more proactive, more actions than plans. I think we have, we had during the last 10 or 15 years, a lot of plans. Now is time for action. We know the problem, so we should fix it. We should also follow all the data because the data impacting the black communities and also all the minorities. And I hear someone asking, so which kind, which kind of solution that we can ask? First of all, for the last, in my previous experience, I tried to push youth people from minorities to the, to, to have a sitting on boards. And this is something that to show that the desire, that we can include everyone in, in, in our society and to give them the possibility to contribute in our, in every single action that we have. And I hear Mr. Gibson and also my friend Benoit Lengvin say that the thing that we should do is implique-vous, implique-vous. My door is open to everyone, but it's only one door. So I'm here to listen, I'm here to bring your concern to the National Assembly, but we need you, we need you in every single, like, topic of the life, not only at the political level, but social, cultural, economic. And together we can, we can, like, we can bring solution. And as I said at the beginning, the time today, we should be more proactive and ask the governments for more actions. And when, when I said governments, it's not only the provincial governments, also the municipal government, at the federal government too. At the municipal, I think it's time now to, 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 to bring more solution to the problems that we have with the police of Montreal. And I know Mr. Gibson said a lot of positive things. And I know also Benoit Lengvin and Mayor Jimbs and Ensemble Montreal, they are asking for, for some solution. So now, we don't have time to wait until like the next year to have this solution. So I, I will stop now, yes?
No, I just said, well said, well said, and we're going to continue. We still have more questions. And I just want everyone to know that we are taking in all the questions and we're going to try to get through, through this all and that we're, we're receiving them and we're, we're moving forward with that. But before we, we continue, actually, just one last question. It's kind of a short one, so if you could please answer quickly, Mayor Belvidere. This one is for you and it's from someone named Kathleen Adams, who wants to know when you, as representatives of the city of Pointe Claire, are going to make a public statement about these demonstrations that we've been seeing and this outpouring and this call for change? Mayor Belvidere.
I'm sorry, so city of Pointe Claire, we have gotten involved with Whipka and we're working with them. And I, I think that this is time to take this situation serious. We want to help get the situation moved forward and we want to help finance. It seems that the money is unfortunately at the root of the problem where we'll take money to fund in order to help. We're there, we hooked up with Jim Base and Alex from DDO to be part of the Blues Festival in order to raise money to help the black community. And you know what? It's sad that that's what it takes, but I am willing to be part of the solution. And Pointe Claire, I believe that we, you know, we're a great community, we're a diverse society, we, we hire all kinds of, we don't look at the, we don't look at the color, we look at the education. And once again, it always becomes a question of education. I don't think it's only a question of, of the city being educated, but I think it's a problem of, we got to bring everybody at the, at the, at the roots of this society. We have to educate everybody about the situation, color and different nationalities and, and just move forward. We're all equal at the end of the day. And I think Pointe Claire.
Thank you. You know, I'm sorry, thank you for that. I just want to send it over to Kimba, who wanted to say a few things as we continue on, as we head into the last 20 minutes or so of this session. And I just want to say before, before that, that, you know, this is the beginning of a conversation, one that we have to continue afterwards. And that if you ever, there are people here that are on this session and you have questions for them and you're not sure how to reach out to them, that Whipka is there for you to be able to reach out for them, if you haven't been able to keep track of all the people that are on here. And so on that note, I'm going to hand it over to Kimba Mitchell.
I, I just want to say very briefly that I'm monitoring the questions on Facebook and a lot of them really summarize the fact that for the, for the politicians on here speaking, that they're stating, and this isn't humorous, you can read through it, the answers are too vague. They want to have, there's a question, they want you to be more specific and speak about solutions and what you're doing now. I have, there's someone saying, I heard a lot of, I, a quick, sorry, there's quite a bit of the old, the same old from politicians. You know, you're, you're, it's just going around in circles. We want answers, we want solutions. So the next questions that come up, we really appreciate if, to stick to the point and, and, and let's just, let's just start the conversation to speak about what we're doing to solve some of these issues. And I think the, the citizens will, will appreciate that. So I just, I'm asking if you can answer the question, thank you.
And that actually leads very, very nicely into the fact that right now we're going to be talking about solutions. And we'd like to first hear from the panelists for their solutions. If in an ideal world, in an ideal world, what would be the one thing that you would see as a solution to help get us on the path to healing and moving forward? And I would like to start with you, Judge.
Fine. I'm, I believe if we're talking in terms of policing and the system of policing, we will have recommendations coming forward from the SPE BM. But at the same time, I think that there are some elementary things that are necessary. It has to do with the direct involvement of people from racialized minorities and in particular, those from the black community, African community, French-speaking, English-speaking, in terms of the selection committees, from the top officials down to all the management people. In other words, there are selection committees, there are internal people who may be on these committees and they basically reproduce the practices, the policies that have existed in the past. We need new input at that level. We also need a process, we have an independent civilian review board. But unfortunately, from what I understand, there has not been that much of a change in terms of outputs. And therefore, I think it's something that, again, there needs to be direct input and direct participation. Now, I know that there was a petition filed and there were hearings held by a consultation board of the city of Montreal. And I know that one of the panel members today, Valora Ma Hallness, was one of the initiators and organizers of that. I did get to listen to some of the hearings as they were broadcast in the evening. And I would really think that that is an experience that is empowering and that also brought forth very much helpful information. And it would be important to know what that process is going to lead to and to what extent the experience of that process can be funneled into this attempt to reform policing and eliminate brutality in policing. I'm appalled by some of the lack of leadership in Quebec. And I believe from my personal background and from knowing people who've been involved in communities, that we can expect more and contribute more.
Thank you. Up next, Stephen, you'd like to answer with the number one thing. You're, if you could choose amongst a host of solutions, one thing that you could see get done in short order, what would it be?
I'll be very specific. I think in height of what's been going on and what we've heard a premier say, I don't think there can be any change until there's acknowledgement that there is a problem. Like, that's like telling somebody, well, no, you don't have a black eye. No, that person did not die for that reason. And straight denial of something, it will never change. So I think there has to be acknowledgement from a top because I'm not sure how it's going to trickle down any to people, you know, working in a system if the top of the system says, there's no problem, business as usual.
Thank you. And Wusong? If you could choose one solution that you could envision that would make this better, that would help, that would move us to the next level, what would it be?
Well, I think the, the one thing it would be to at least have an acknowledgement, Black History Month, at least in all schools, that would start. And also the, the resources, because a lot of teachers, they like to have resources. They want, because remember I said there's like uncomfortableness, talking about racial biases and so forth. So basically educators, all of us in the education system, we have to be mindful of that. So when we're addressing our students, that we are coming with, you know, real ways to address students' questions moving forward. Because at the end of the day, it starts from young. These, you know, I'm in the business of the younger children. And so for me, I would like to have more books in the schools, in the classrooms, reflecting the diversity, reflecting the black experience, reflecting different cultures and so forth. And to have that discussion in the classrooms, that would be also very important, not just during Black History Month. And I think that's, as I mentioned before, if I'm in contact with the education department at my school board that I'm working with, working for, and talking with the education, I would like to have that connection with the education minister because it really has to be in all schools. It cannot be just me, some of my colleagues try to move this forward in certain schools. It has to be in all, because it starts young. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Kite?
So I think that an important element that we've been hearing about is representation. So representation with regards to the police, our judicial system, our schools, the black designated worker. So I think that representation is a good thing. However, you know, it doesn't change that you might have a school where there isn't a black principal or that you might not have a black designated worker. And it doesn't also influence what happens at these higher levels, right? At these higher levels of policy, decision makers. And it doesn't recognize that only certain people in our society are able to access those higher positions or even able to access those, you know, talking about the swim test, right? Those are barriers, those are very clear barriers that prevent members from certain parts of our community from even allowing or being able to play. And so I think what systemic racism means is it's that it recognizes that only certain people within the society are even able to participate. And so while I think representation is a good thing, I think you also need to think about, well, how can we also strengthen our community, right? So that might mean that we're not going to leave it to the school boards to develop Afrocentric curriculum. We're going to provide our own school board or our own community center that will allow that to happen. Or it might mean that, you know, if we're not going to be able to intervene with regards to social workers at the government level, then perhaps we need to find a way to allow for intervention to occur at the community level. So there's a lot of work that's being done to look at how can we start investing outside of those systems that have been kind of created in a way to somehow disadvantage us because they don't allow us to actually be able to even play, right? So that's where community becomes so important because it allows us to build our resilience to then, you know, is it that we need to have better programs, you know, in terms of accessing university education? Is it that we need to look at, you know, employment, hiring practices? Anyways, I could go on, but I think that we need to think about what the root cause of what we're seeing in society is attributed to. And that is those very basic needs or basic indicators at a socio-demographic level.
Thank you, thank you for that. Up next is Winnie Daniel. Your main solution that you would like to see in short order?
Well, I think it's a tricky question and my answer is, I think we need to work on mentalities. And that is hard to do because it's not concrete. It's not something that we can change. As much as we need to take concrete actions, I think there's a work that needs to be done as how we perceive ourselves as people and how people are, see us, and we need to open dialogue about that. I, it might be a naive perspective, but I honestly and profoundly believe that people are intrinsically good and then life happens. But to me, we're good in the core. And I believe that no matter who we are at any given situation, we do the very best we can with the resources we have at the moment. And unfortunately, I think the racism of witness is a lack of resources that people, it's a lack of resources. And when I talk of resources, I refer mainly, though not exclusively, to a set of skills to manage emotions, to efficiently communicate opinions and assert needs. In those resources, I think also of our ability to properly assess and respond to a situation in a manner which respects our values and which respects the person we're interacting with. I think we, a lot of people in our society also don't know how to detach themselves from personal worries to show Personal worries to show compassion and understanding. And this is a work that has to be done by calling up. All of our resources. To stop the, either the extreme violence or the profiling or the microaggressions. We need to address the ignorance and the fear and the lack of the skills that I mentioned. Because for me, it's the gateway of the, all the hate and the violence we witness or we suffer. So there's, I think we need to call racism for what it is. When we witnessed it, we need to use every opportunity to educate and correct. Expect demand and provide open mindedness to talk about these issues. And I think that there's an emphasis on finding allies because this has become a fight. We each have a specific set of privileges that we can put to use, like we're doing right now, talking about it and asking for opinion. But there is also all the privileges that come when we're involved in the legal system, when we're politicians, healthcare workers, educations. We need to work together to discuss this solution. And also in our respective inner circles, we have people who are minorities or who are not, who benefit from different privileges. And I think that holding people accountable with their privileges, telling them clearly what we expect of them. Is part of the daily fight. We can, we can contribute in to support the cause and moving as a society. So it's a large answer to say that we have to talk and talk and talk about it and. Expect people to listen and, you know, not get tired because it's. That's how for me, mentalities will be changed and we'll be able to have honest conversations and expect people to make a change.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. We still have more people wanting to respond to the solutions, but there's some people on our Facebook community group who have a question. For the mayors that are still on here. If you could please, due to time, just sort of answer it quickly within thirty seconds. Because it kind of is a little bit of a yes or no question in some ways. Then the question is, when will all mayors make a public statement? In support of the black community? If you could please answer that within a sentence or two, when? The question is when?
Mayor Bill, if you want to answer, please click unmute.
We can make a statement. I have no problem making a statement in the near future, within a couple of weeks when we do one of our public. Public announcements. It's something we're working on. We're working with Whipka and I'd be more than. Proud to make a statement that will support the cause and moving forward.
Thank you. If any other mayors, when would you be able to make a statement?
I can, I can go if you don't mind. We are already looking at something to be passed at our next council meeting. Which is the beginning of July. This is something we've been working on for the last week or so. And we will be presenting a motion at our council in early July to make sure that. We throw our political support. We've done it individually. We do it through our community. However, we feel that it's something that's necessary in terms of a motion and we plan to do this at our July sitting.
Thank you. So so far, a couple of weeks from now and at the next council meeting, anybody else? Are there any other elected officials on there that? Okay, all right. So we're going to head to Errol Johnson to speak to us as we start to wrap up. This conversation that's been very illuminating and very positive. So, Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Johnson, please click on unmute.
Okay, as we wait for Mr.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Sarah. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Kimber and the team from Whipka for the fantastic job you're doing. I know that it's a very difficult time for us right now in dealing with all the problems that are there. But I'd just like to add in terms of the concrete action. I don't think at this time, I've been around in politics for a very long time. And just making statements is not enough to get concrete action. I'd rather seeing concrete actions. Yes, statements are nice and it's fluffy and all that sort of stuff. But we, as the members of the black community and white community, need actually more concrete action. What you're doing today as an organization in putting this team of people together, professionals, politicians and everybody. To have a great discussion about what's happening in our lives and how we can affect change, it's very important. What we have to do as a community is to begin to participate more in, in everything. Elections, the politics at our school boards and be present. There's a lack of presence of the black community in all these areas and we have to be consistent. We can't only wait for the time when there is a crisis that we get together. And begin to hope that there's going to be change. Change doesn't happen like that, you know? I've been in politics since nineteen eighty-four. I've sat on several advisory committees. You're talking about the stats they need in order to make action. They've got all of that information before. Both at the federal, provincial and municipal level, they know the information. Okay, I've been there. They talk about the situation of black people moving to, on boards and directorships and all those sort of stuff. All that information is there, right? So we don't have to wait for more studies or more data. If the governments want to take effective action. They can and they should and they will, but we have to have them accountable, accountable, okay? To make a statement at a city council to say, well, you support black people, what, what action is that going to take? You know what I'm saying? We've got to be realistic. It's very important. So we've got to be strategic in what we're doing and what we're saying and what we want. Make sure you've got to be concrete and you've got to be concise. We want this and this is what we want. And this is all we go about it and we work together as a team in getting what we want. And you're entitled to that because we are all contributors to this great country. And we need to feel good about being a part of it and being taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson. And the mayor of DDO would like to also respond to this in terms of solutions. Alex?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, it's about ten minutes, fifteen minutes. I've been trying to get on. Sorry. First of all, I just want to congratulate you guys for, for this evening and bringing everyone together. I think it's important. I think it's important to start this dialogue and give a good exchange to this topic. I'm going to say racism, discrimination. And with this, obviously, you always need to bring clarity to a situation and obviously. Education is always key and there's a few things. I tried to raise my hand a few times during this.
Obviously, you always need to bring a situation and obviously.
Sorry, I'm getting some type of echo here. I apologize. Earlier on, I was asked what the cities have done in terms of. Your own internal policies, perhaps in, in light of discrimination and such things as this. And I can see that upon us coming into government, one of the first things that we started to look at internally was. Our hiring process to make sure that we had diversity within the walls of Dollar Days or Mo. Our programs to make sure that they reflected the diversity of the community.
And have you succeeded at that? Just because I know there's people on here, they know, I think people on here recognize that a lot of work has been started. And that there's been committees and things set up. I think. If we could just have from you very briefly, what's the next solution, the thing that you will be doing next to move forward in DDO?
For us, it's really turning to the community and really working alongside parallel. To really get a pulse. And, and as Mr. Johnson said, it's simple to just stand up and make a statement. Honestly, it's very simple to do that. Putting the actions behind it is something else and that's where we have to look at together. With an organization like Whipka and the community and say, okay, what is it that we want to do as a next step? And then what mechanisms can we put into place? That's what I would be looking at for.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Johnson, and then we are going to have a poem to wrap up and wrap up this meeting. Mrs. Johnson.
My name is Veronica Johnson. I'm a retired citizenship judge and before that I was in the field of education. So my comments will respond more to education and the possible solution. And I salute my colleagues out there who are still working in the field. I was a mother for a long time. I am a mother, but I'm saying I had school age children for a long time. And when I saw that nothing was being done in the schools to address the black history. I went to the school and I said to teachers in different grades, I think, starting in grade four for my own children. Would I be allowed to come in and give a presentation? No teacher ever refused me and I did it in grade four, grade five, grade six, and they were so happy. But after a while, they started asking me to do it for, you know, different sections of the school. So one, two, three, and four, five, and so on. So that's what I mean. I would suggest as concrete action, we as parents, first of all, have to take some steps. And those who may not have the skills to do it themselves, that's why we have a group like Whipka, of which I've been a member. For all of its existence since it started back in nineteen eighty-two. And we, as an organization, have helped a lot of people, done many presentations in schools. And so that's one concrete action where we can become more involved. So if I may respectfully suggest, we should look at that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Up next, Joan, who is the treasurer from Whipka, would like to say something.
Good evening, everyone. To the mayors, you said you're going to do something in July. I think we need to do something now. It's happening now, not a month from now.
Mayor Base, would you like to, you were saying that at the next council meeting, there'll be an official statement. To go along with some of the action that's starting to be taken.
Well, certainly, certainly the, the written portion of a motion just goes into the archives to reflect our. Commitment and our, our concern and empathy and sympathy towards the community that's going through this. We have to look back too. In terms of what's being done already. There have been community meetings with our SPVM and all the different organizations where Whipka has been a part of. We've also looked at holding meetings with, with the different representatives that we're looking at as well doing now and having. Local consultation meetings in terms of the black community and see how we can help at a local level. We presented, of course, a motion as well to the city of Montreal for the cameras to be deployed within our police department to make sure that. These brutal attacks on the black community no longer happen. And if they do, there is recorded. You know, background to it so that people can, can see exactly what's happening. And so there are steps, yes, a written document within. A council meeting to demonstrate the commitment of an elected body is important. But there has been work being done before that, as we did for our Muslim community, as we continue to do for the black community and others. And so this is an ongoing issue, but now in light of what I said earlier, being in a reactive stage, certainly. There are continued discussions necessary to be able to at least pinpoint locally what we can do. For the communities that are here and then spread that further into Montreal and our neighboring communities on the West Island. And so there are steps that have been taken already and these are just additional ones that we plan as we move forward.
Yes, I wanted to say something that. The West Island Black Community Association has not been contacted by any of the mayors. So I don't know who you're speaking to, but it's not us. So if you need to speak to us, I'm waiting for a call. I'm waiting for an email. But I will not sit here and pretend that we're involved with, with conversations because it's not happening with us. The statement should have made, should have been made a long time ago. So we want a statement made. For the black community. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And we've been writing down the solutions or at least I've been note taking as we've all been sharing and tweeting. These are some of the things that you have come up with as we've gone through this. New input at the decision making level. Acknowledgement that there's a problem, an acknowledgement of Black History Month and all the schools and the resources to see it through. Our own, looking at ways outside of the current system and in our own, creating our own system, a mentality change. Statements that are statements, but that's just one thing and citizens, solutions with the citizens and parents being involved. With their school, school age children and taking part in this. Now, as we start to wrap everything up, I would like to ask Rowan Higgins to come and to read a poem.
Hello, hello. Blessings, everyone. I'm happy to be here. And just before I start, I will let you know a little about me. I'm an educator with an English school board. I've worked at Batshaw, done street work and worked with many of the black community organizations in Montreal for over twenty years. One of the things that I just want to comment on is about educating people about our history. Especially Canadian black history. And yes, our school boards may tell us that it's up to the teachers. But I think if we're going to teach Quebec history, Canadian history, everyone's history should be in the books. So I had started an organization, a movement rather, called Truth Empire, not just teaching about our past and where we come from. For us to know our roots, but to also teach them financial literacy. And then give them opportunities to explore the world with different lenses. So that is what I would empower. All of us as educators, parents and leaders to do moving forward. I also want to add, when I saw what has happened over and over, I won't just mention George Floyd. Because we've seen it here in Montreal. I'm an educator who has worked with Nicholas Gibbs. I'm an educator who now works with his child. And. It is very difficult to. Work with, with children who have suffered from this, with parents who have been affected by this. Have not spoken publicly about it because our jobs. However, I will say that it is important that out of this whole dialogue, one thing that has not come up. And I will advocate for, a lot of us deal with it every day as social workers, parents, et cetera. Is the mental health of our black community. The mental wealth that is shattered because of us seeing these images throughout our digital space. Because we go through this all the time that we are racially profiled and even assassinated online. So my poem covers this and. It is, it will evoke a lot of emotions. Some people have chosen to watch a video, some haven't, which is okay. Because we need to preserve our mental health. So I'll ask everyone before I start to please breathe. Take in a deep breath. And I want you to exhale. So. I'm asking you to think of a perspective as a black child. Here in Montreal, seeing what they see, seeing what they go through every day, from the perspective of a black parent. What they have to tell their children and what they go to sleep thinking about if they're not home on time. And just to remember that many of us have deal with not being present in our bodies. I'm a witness of that. Because the trauma that we relive, live, live again and again, we are so used to going numb. So that's why so many of us are silent. So many of us do not know how to express what we're feeling because we've been told. That we need to get over it. Thank you for the opportunity. I will start my poem, which is called, "I Am A Witness." Take a breath, y'all. I am a witness. I am a witness to another black man saying I can't breathe. His last breath stolen by the person who's supposed to serve and protect. His last breath stolen by the person who's supposed to serve and protect, shouting for his mama while an officer forcibly kneels in his neck, blocking his airway passage while his hands shackled in chromed steel bracelets. A passerby shouts out that he is in medical distress. Instead of an arrest, they laid this man to rest, forging another story that he was resisting arrest. I am a witness of strange fruit being crushed against concrete, freshly pressed by the knees of an officer of peace, the juice of a human life pouring out of its vessel trying to find its soul, lost in the streets, leaving some proud and others bitter. The undertaker in uniform wiped his hands on his pants and as if he was dusting off fertilizer, proud to bury another black man, ashes to ashes, dust to dust. You see, it's open season and the reason is that he carries a license to capture or kill those who fit the description. Officer of peace had to be reminded by citizen that he is human. They replied, "This is why we don't do drugs, kids," reminiscent of the nineties anti-drug ad featuring Pee-wee Herman. I am a witness to the symphony of blackness and criminality reflected in society. Here is the evidence. They just planted another lie on a black man. Now it's our choice to believe the stereotype, the autopsy, or what we actually see. I am an eyewitness to a modern-day lynching, tormented by constant images that go viral on screens globally, gripped in a chokehold on our big screens to smartphones. I am a witness, again and again, to another assassination throughout cyberspace. Yesterday, we were trending in business, fashion, music and challenges, but when it comes to our lives, tick tock, don't rush, don't rush. I am a witness to the reoccurring onslaught of black men and women. Desensitized, my eyes blink at microaggressions and systemic racism, killed in broad daylight so we can only see ourselves in darkness. Normalizing these images of dead black bodies so no one will care, including ourselves, yet deep down, there's a sickening response to the tears and blood pooling beyond chalk lines. My eyes follows the crimson footprints now washed away by their lies and paid leaves. I am a witness that our lives don't matter. I have never witnessed any other race take their last breath on camera, hunted, shot or beaten, even in mainstream news feeding sick desires for trauma porn with our live streaming live. I am a witness in a time where music is muted in ninety seconds across digital platforms. For black lives, the reel keeps rolling over eight minutes and counting. Copyright that. I am a witness to our people mistrusting the system, while others believe it must be something we did, like we would sign our own death sentence. You may see loud protests, but I am a witness to heavy silent screams of the oppressed, to those who don't react because they feel helpless, don't know how to express because they are born into and dying from chronic crises. We are shell-shocked, numb, sick and tired. These are the symptoms of PTSD. Whether we march, kneel or speak, our voices, our voices are unheard in the streets. Every living thing on this earth retreats or reacts or stands still until the threat passes. So please stop asking our people who are paralyzed to walk with you. Stop judging others for not speaking up when their vocal cords are shot from screaming, crying for babies they never birthed and yet feel the contractions of these now household names. For many of us, we are in a perpetual fight or flight, just surviving from being exposed to this trauma. Self-preservation is a luxury while this narrative hijacks our mental health, yet still have to strive to reach black excellence. So this, we mask it. Our minds never sanitize of this imagery. I, I am a witness choking on fear that I can one day be that mother burying her child six feet under. Or that my prayers are not thick enough to cover my man as he drives in his expensive car. You know, that BMW? That black man walking will be his crime? That black man, woman, breathing, driving, jogging, sleeping will be their last time? I no longer want to be, I no longer want us to be a witness. I no longer want us to be a witness. I no longer want us to be a witness to being branded in this imagery seared in our minds, targets tattooed on our backs, signs of the times throughout history. I am a man. Black is beautiful. Black lives matter. We shall overcome. I no longer want to be a witness, witness to what comes next. Hashtags like #NoJusticeNoPeace, say their names. The millions likes and shares, silence, rage and fear, marches, protests, looting, soldiers dying in the front line, including our allies. I'm a witness to our pain, which remains the same. We are forever in labor with pain that our children will never belong or feel accepted, and they are guilty in being groomed from preschool to prison. Before they leave their house, they are reminded by their caregivers. Stand tall, smile, look straight so you won't come off too hostile. Keep your hands where it can be seen. Move slowly, never run. Don't hang out too late on the streets. Keep your hoodie off. Comply, answer their questions cordially and politely, and whatever you do, just stay calm. And keep that camera rolling. It's not rocket science that there is a blue wall of silence. If other officers stand in line of justice, they will get dealt with and become an outsider. To the police who take the oath and never betray the badge, there's hope. But I hope they go further and become a force of love for humanity with integrity. I am a witness that even with video, they rarely end up behind bars. It doesn't make a difference if anything I fear for the lives of the witness who speak up and record, for the mental health of the community, for the safety of the activists who stand up and speak, but mysteriously disappear or are found deceased. I am a witness of a father who prayed that his baby boy would be born with lighter skin like his mother, so his son can have a better chance of surviving. I do hope for that little black boy and that little black girl, that they will know that no matter what, we have figured out how to build our community, that they are safe and they belong, that they have a fair chance to succeed in our society, and they don't have to work twice as hard and they don't have to look over their shoulder. I can't wait to be a witness to that. One thing I can say, I am a witness that during a pandemic, the world is rising in unison, like the ozone layer is healing and pollution levels are dropping and the wind is changing direction. So are the hearts and minds of many. Many eyes have been opened. Allies are saying, "We are listening and we are with you." We are learning. Companies are donating towards a movement of change, proving that together we are better. I am a witness to the fires that burns in our minds and showing up in the streets. And I believe we will rise like a phoenix from the ashes that we can overcome if we put on new lenses with a perspective to love one another and get rid of our old glasses. Please, let us socially distance ourselves from those who weaponize their words and actions with hate and go down on bend a knee and collectively vow to change our state. Montreal, raise your fists and let us unite in solidarity. This is a time to show the world that we are not from the rubbles of our past and we are truly a vibrant, colorful city. Thank you.
Thank you, Rowan. I think that's the perfect way to end this conversation, or actually rather begin the next conversation that's to happen. We got a lot done in two and a half hours, but there's a lot more to do. We just started this conversation. And once again, the West Island Black Community Association, if there's anyone who was taking part in this that you wanted to ask a question to, that you had something to say, they have the contact information for those people. It's not done. We all have a list of things that we went through, that we said, that we acknowledged need to be changed. And I'm counting on all of us and all of you to move forward and to get this done because we can do it together. And thank you so much for having me be here to moderate this. And I'd like to pass things over now to Shayna to say goodbye.
Good night, everyone. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for everyone that is online with us right now, from our moderator, Alicia, to our panelists, to the city councillors that have taken the time to log on and to the community at large that has been participating and has been sending their questions in. We are so sorry that we couldn't fit everything in right now, but don't worry, your questions have been noted. And if you have questions that you want to bring up to the next town hall meeting, because believe me, Whipka is committed to getting the community answers. Right now, we have taken, well, we have used this opportunity for the community to highlight the very real issues that exist here in Quebec so that everybody can be aware with them and we can no longer feign ignorance. But also, we have tabled proposals and solutions for our city leaders. So city leaders, I hope you were taking notes. And if you weren't, I implore you to watch the video recording afterwards because at the next town hall meeting, we don't just want it to be discussions, we want it to be actual concrete plan of actions. We know that nothing can change overnight. And we know that right now, as Rowan said, not just the black community is witness to the horrific death of George Floyd, but the entire world has been a witness. And it is insane to me, insane to the entire black community, that the advent of the camera on the cellphone has been a better and bigger protection for our people than the people that are sworn to protect and serve us. So with that in mind, I am asking you all to do the work. Learn the definition of systemic racism. Systemic racism exists today because of the systematic racism that existed when we were first freed from slavery. So let us all do the work and come to the table with answers. We can no longer afford to skirt questions. We can no longer afford to be politically correct. Now the time for political correctness is out of the window. So, community, please know that Whipka is here to serve you and we are here to bring answers to the table. And we look forward to having you all participate in our next town hall meeting.
And on that note, we thank you. So thank you all for being here and have a good night.